Meeting of September 8th and we'll have the pledge. Rick, you want to lead us?
Certainly.
Okay. Well, welcome to all. We have a special presentation to begin our program tonight. Dr. Kenneth Johnston, Executive Dean, Ohio University Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine. Dana, did you have a few words you wanted to say?
No, just welcome Dr. Johnston. Appreciate that he would come out here this evening and share a little bit of an update on what's going on with the Heritage College.
Great, thank you. I know you're very limited in time, so our students are awesome, the campus is great, life is good. Any questions?[55.32][55.32](laughter) Now, really, I'm going to try to go through, this is tough in 10 minutes, it's like doing, you know, describe the universe in 50 words or less and give three examples, but I wanted to give you some sense of what's happening here at the college. Now, the reason we developed this campus was in line with priorities for the state and the nation. The state and federal government very focused on primary care and the needs to transform care. We have an aging population and a need, a significant need for new primary care physicians. We have an aging primary care workforce and a huge lack of primary care physicians. This graph here shows the supply that we have of primary care physicians and the need, and you can see that the need far exceeds the supply that we currently have. Our medical school was founded by law to focus on primary care. We're just coming up four decades later from our founding where we were founded to focus on primary care and we've had a really significant impact. Our impact is to serve the underserved and to provide care where it's most needed in the state. This is our current class, our largest class in history, 240 of our students. This was their first day on the campus getting their white coat down in Athens, and I wanted to just tell you a little bit about our class overall. So we admitted about 240 students, 139 in Athens, 51 in Cleveland, and 48 in Dublin. About half of our students in Dublin are from central Ohio. Part of the reason we drew this campus here was to have a larger impact on the state. We also opened a new campus in Cleveland this year, again, trying to draw students from northeast Ohio. Ninety-eight percent of our class is from Ohio. Out of the 240, I can literally count them on one hand, five students that aren't from Ohio. Now, one of them went to school in Cincinnati, so it kind of like come down the floor. We're working really hard at training people from Ohio to stay in Ohio to practice primary care. About half of our students are men and women, and we have a large percentage of minority students, about 26% of our students are minority students. This is our class here in Dublin, our second class to be admitted, so now we have 100 students, and the next few years we'll have 200 students on the Dublin campus. One of the things that's unique about this is now they'll do their entire training here in central Ohio. They'll be based in Dublin and they'll be here for their entire training. This was our campus on its opening. One of the things that's happened since then is we've also developed a PA program, and this is what we call our Integrated Educational Center. A PA program has started on the campus as well as some other programming affiliation with Columbus State, and we're looking at further planning around what we do on the campus. Go back for a second. This is Bill Burke, who many of you have met. He's the dean of my campus locally, providing leadership, and we truly have an outstanding leadership team and amazing group of students that I'm sure you would all be proud of. Now, one of the things is that the Heritage College has a much larger footprint than just Athens and now central and northeast Ohio. We have affiliations all over the state with our training network of hospitals, and what that has done is we have recruited over 2,000 faculty from around the state to be our physicians, many of those in central and northeast Ohio. Another way to think about it, when you look at the total number of physicians in the state, one in every 14 physicians in the state is a Heritage College faculty member. One in every 14. So we've had an opportunity to really completely expand our footprint all around the state. We are in the top 10 for primary care in the nation out of all medical schools that we've had, so we've had a real success story over these four decades. Now, we've had an even bigger impact on Ohio. So this is the state of Ohio. If you are green, green's good, yellow's not so good, and as you get further to the red, it's bad. This means that over half the state is underserved for primary care physicians. Over half the state is underserved for primary care physicians. Now, I did the It's a Wonderful Life story. What if the Heritage College never existed? So now 72% of the counties become underserved for primary care physicians. So you notice the ones here, the stippled ones are the ones that change, and the heat map gets worse as a result of that. So we've had a really significant impact overall on the state. Now, one of the big things that we've done as we have started in Athens, grown to Dublin, and then into Cleveland, is the connection to the community and how important it is for us to do that and being good stewards of our community. So we've looked for many different kinds of opportunities to connect into the community, and one of the most fun ones here is this, what we call this OU Plus Reach, which is reimagining educational approaches to careers in healthcare. This is a STEM program that we've worked with the local high schools throughout the year and over the summer, and it's been very inspirational to the students. These are some of the students here practicing with simulated patients in robotics, and then also, we, over the summer, just have a little fun, we put, we had the life flight helicopter land on the campus. The students come in, they get an experience of what it's like to be a medical student, and the feedback that we get from the students, these are some of our students from local high school, is that the reach to get into medical school and to get into significantly daunting programs doesn't feel so far now anymore for them. So these are really great inspirational programs that we have going on with a bunch of really positive comments that the students give us around these kind of programmings. So I wanted to take just a minute to talk about what does the future look like for us here as well. We've had an amazing impact in southeast Ohio, growing to central Ohio here now, and this provides for us kind of an additional hub to spoke out from there. So our hope is that we'll be able to, when you go back and picture the state there with that whole swath over the center of the state not having enough primary care physicians, that we will populate the state with primary care physicians, particularly in this region. We're working with the PA program on interprofessional education on our campus. We're working with Columbus State around pathway programs in healthcare delivery. We're imagining what does this campus look like, this incredible campus, and I'd be happy to give anybody in the audience a tour at any point because we're so proud of that. How does that fit into the Western Innovation District, and how do we imagine what that campus looks like as we continue to grow? And we've been working with the city here, thinking through, how can we have an even bigger impact on healthcare delivery, on medical education, and beyond, maybe into other areas in biomedical sciences? So it's really been a great partnership. One of the things that I say about our business school, who has been also trying to do some work here, is that this is a great case study around partnership and leverage. And without the partnership with the city here, there's no way we would have been able to open this campus, and I want to thank all of you for your vision and your leadership in helping us to open this campus. The partnerships that we've had around central Ohio with Ohio Health and others to be able to provide the clinical rotations is another place where we would not have been able to do without it, and many of you know that we got a transformational $105 million grant that helped us do this, the largest grant to support primary care, medical education in history anywhere. So I'm so proud of everything that we've been doing. The future couldn't be brighter for us here right now, and it is such a fun time to be at the university, visioning what this campus could be, can be, as we continue to move forward. So I got through that wicked fast.[524.29][524.29](laughter) I'm from Boston, I talk fast sometimes. I'd be happy, Mr. Keenan, to answer any questions or just to say thank you so much for your time.
Well, it's evident by your passion, how excited you are, and we too are excited to have you here. It's an impressive story. You've been great partners, you and your colleagues as well, and you've also become good friends, and we very, very much appreciate the partnership. If council has any questions, we thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for your time. I love to be able to brag about the great work, and I'm so thankful for our partnership, and have a good meeting.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you, doctor. Okay, we have a, I'd like to take a moment and talk about the city's social host law, which has recently received some attention in the media. The court case involving the tragic 2000 death of a Dublin teenager has reached a resolution. Two people have been found guilty of violating the city's social host law in connection with the death of an 18-year-old Stephen Romanelli. Dublin's social host law is one of the toughest in the country, and it's a result of this community really coming together, taking action, and toughening the law back in 2009. Our ordinance was updated to forbid anyone from negligently allowing the possession or consumption of alcohol by underage people on their premises. The word negligently replaced knowingly. The small word change has made a big difference, making it easier to charge and prosecute those who allow or turn a blind eye to underage drinking. I want to recognize this council, and especially Amy Saleh and Vice Mayor Rick Gerber, for taking the lead in helping champion this effort clear back in 2009. And I also want to thank our community partners, ACT, PERC, Youth2Youth, Dublin Schools, and the countless others who have helped raise awareness about this issue and make our community safer. Now, I'd like to share with you this segment that aired on 10 TV last week.
Police issued a warning tonight to parents in Dublin. If your teens serve alcohol at a party, you could go to jail. A father and son just learned their punishment after a party that ended with the death of a teenager. 10 TV's Megan Matthews is live at Dublin Jerome High School tonight with the message and reaction from the parents of the teen who died. Megan?
Jerry, a Dublin police officer stood inside this high school tonight to tell parents, you cannot turn a blind eye to what's happening. Tragic consequences have already been seen in the Dublin community from these actions.
No longer can we just stand upstairs and say, well, I wasn't in charge of that, because you are.
It's Officer Chuck Collier's mission to talk some sense into parents whose high school seniors will turn the tassel this year. The objective, he says, is to make sure students live to see it.
I hope something resonates, whether it's me referencing Stephen Romanelli or something else. We need something to resonate with them personally so they can look at themselves in a mirror and say, you know what, you're right, this isn't worth it.
Collier pleaded to the crowd, be a parent, not a friend. It's a message Vince and Peggy Romanelli stand behind.
This happened, and we don't want it to happen again.
Their son Stephen would have started his junior year of college at Ohio State. That was the plan, but when he left an underage drinking party in August of 2013, Stephen never made it home.
There's always reminders, you're always thinking about him.
While the Romanellis say they'll never have closure, one door is closed. After a two-year wait, the hosts of that house party, Brian and Cameron Wills, were sentenced last week. Father and son were found guilty of violating Dublin's social host law. Along with jail time, father Brian Wills will speak at each Dublin high school.
We wanted something, if you can say, positive to come out of this, and one of them was community awareness.
The Romanellis say the sentence is fair. They hope, like Officer Collier, awareness will help keep families together.
It's about getting our kids through high school, through college safely, and not having to bury them before it's their time.
Officer Collier says Dublin is one of the only cities in Ohio with the negligence language in its law. That means if you know underage drinking is happening, you have to do something. If not, you are liable for anything that happens as a result. Reporting in Dublin, Megan Matthews, 10 TV News.
Thank you. Our hearts go out to the Romanelli family, and we hope this is the last time anyone breaks our social host law, but if anyone does break the law, they should know...
You're their biggest fans in the stands.
That they will be prosecuted. Thank you. They should know they'll be prosecuted. I'd like to ask Chief Heinze von Exberg up here to say a few words about enforcing the law. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. I really think Officer Collier did a fantastic job of just emphasizing how seriously we take our social host law. You know, as Mrs. Romanelli said, if there is a silver lining to a tragic incident like this, I think it's, it has really made the community more aware of our social host law and how important it is. Just for some statistics to kind of illustrate what we've done since the law was changed, since then, we've had 75 reports of parties involving underage drinking. We've made over 220 arrests of underage persons for drinking or possessing alcohol, and from those 75 parties prosecuted 21 people for hosting under the social host law. Our partnership with the schools also provides us other opportunities to send messages about our social host law. Each athletic season, all three high schools host parents' nights, so parents of the athletes can come in for an orientation, and at each one of those, we show them a video that highlights our social host law, and I'd like to show that to you now.
You're their biggest fans in the stands.
Their loudest cheerleader on the sidelines.
And a friendly face on the other side of the fence. But remember, your most important role is as a parent. We're with the Dublin Division of Police, and we're here to talk to you about Dublin's social host law.
The message is simple. Anyone who negligently allows somebody under the age of 21 to consume or possess alcohol on their premises is breaking the law.
Negligence includes the failure to perceive or avoid risk. In other words, being unaware is not a defense.
You could be charged under the ordinance if a minor consumes alcohol in your home, whether you're present or not.
The Dublin Division of Police takes this law very seriously. We have charged more than a dozen people, including adults and children, since 2009. So parents, talk to your children about this law. Make sure they know that they can be charged. Violating the social host law is a first-degree misdemeanor. Anyone caught and convicted could face a $1,000 fine and up to six months in jail. These consequences are in place to prevent something worse from happening.
Underage drinking is dangerous and can be deadly. Every year, over 5,000 people under the age of 21 die in alcohol-related incidents. These include homicides, suicides, and car crashes.
This is about protecting our kids and their future. Remember to be a parent first and prevent underage drinking. You can find more information on the city of Dublin's social host law at dublinohiousa.gov/polic.
Very good. Anything else you want to add, chief?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. That'll bring us to the portion of our meeting for citizen comments. We have one person that's signed up, Erin Sheen. If you'd like to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, my name is Erin Sheen. I live at 191 Longview Drive. Thank you very much for your time this evening. I have a short, prepared statement to share. My time speaking will be less than three minutes. I'm here to speak briefly regarding Mid-Century Dublin's CIP request for critical safety improvements to our neighborhood. To reiterate a key point that we've made previously, council's vision for Dublin is one of connectivity and multi-generational livability. This is our vision as well. Our neighborhood epitomizes multi-generational aging in place. As a neighborhood located less than 3/4 of a mile from downtown Dublin, we seek to collaborate with the city based on council's core values, in particular to create a complement to the new Bridge Street district development. We have requested sidewalks, better storm water management, and new streets. We have also broken down our request into components, knowing there are various design options for each component, and that each component can be, if necessary, phased in its implementation. There are many ways to approach our CIP request, all with different costs and timing associated with them. However, the current CIP proposal prepared for council by staff reflects a one-size-fits-all approach, one that does not consider various design options and does not break down cost by component. We believe this all-or-nothing frame may be too narrow for our request, particularly if such a narrow frame results in our request being denied. In addition, staff have proposed an assessment model that would require payment from residents based on the frontage of their lots. Respectfully, we feel that staff have again adopted the wrong frame, in this instance, an amenity frame that is not consistent with our request. The idea of an assessment suggests that we are asking for an optional amenity that only benefits a small number of homeowners, but this frame flies in the face of a collaboration between Mid-Century Dublin and the city based on core values with the goal of making Dublin a connected, safe, multi-generational destination. We are not simply asking for an amenity. Instead, we seek to be a part of advancing council's goal for Dublin. Our neighborhood is exceptional, in part because we're less than 3/4 of a mile from downtown. Yet, we do not have a safe, walkable connection to downtown, even with the multi-use path along Dublin Road becoming usable soon. However, with the safety improvements that we have requested, our neighborhood will become a functional part of the city's expanding network consisting of the multi-use path as well as walkable Bridge Street district. To wrap it up, we ask council and staff to please reject the narrow amenity frames underlying the current proposal response to our CIP request. Instead, we ask council and staff to please consider our request in terms of multiple design options and associated costs, and in terms of the core values that we all share. Mid-Century Dublin is a neighborhood of many elderly folks on fixed incomes who cannot afford a special assessment. That is, in essence, a special tax so that the elderly can safely walk in their own neighborhood and to nearby downtown Dublin. We are also a neighborhood of less than affluent families with young children who, again, cannot afford a special tax so that they can walk with their children to the multi-use path without fear of getting hit by a vehicle. But most fundamentally, we are a neighborhood full of residents who want to collaborate with the city to make our community a great complement to Bridge Street district and emerging Dublin of the future. We have a track record of collaboration with the city, and we want to continue that collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheen. I think we all had the benefit of that email earlier, too. I know I read it and others have as well, so...
Thank you.
Brings us to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any council person would like to remove? If not, is there a motion to approve the actions for the eight items that are listed?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
And?
Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And we have ordinance 52-15.
Declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street district to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for collection and deposit of service payments and specifying purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tolls Career and Technical Center, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Ms. Muma.
Good evening, members of council. As outlined for you at your first reading a couple of weeks ago, this particular ordinance establishes the main TIF over blocks B and C within the Bridge Park development. The city has now been in the chain of title and has obtained ownership of all of the parcels, and if has not done so already, will be transferring the applicable parcels back to the developer as required as part of this TIF. We are asking for emergency language this evening so that we can make sure that the TIF is put in place, we file all the appropriate information with the state and the county, and so that the public improvement, such as the roadways, can get funded through the service payments.
Very good. Council, any questions? No, is there a motion to treat as emergency?
So moved.
Thank you, on the motion.
Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Ordinance 50-15.
Res zoning approximately 49.6 acres from our rural district and PLR Planned Low Density Residential District to POD Planned Unit Development District for potential development of the site with up to 45 fee simple single-family lots, 90 detached condominium units with approximately 18 acres of open space on the east side of Cosgrave Road and the CSX Railroad tracks north of Rings, west of Future, Churchman Road under provisions of zoning code section 153.050, and a preliminary plat for 45 fee simple single-family lots rights-of-way, condominium and private drive reserves, and open space in accordance with chapter 152, the subdivision regulations.
Very good. Ms. Perannick.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Keenan. I just have a quick update since first reading. The applicant has provided three-foot service walks as discussed during the first reading to connect the garages to the front porch. We have applicant here today, and they would like to do the short presentation, and they will also address the HOA maintenance and cost issues that was discussed during the first reading. The staff recommendation for the case ordinance is approval as well as for the plat is approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
The developer.
Counsel?
We want the developer's presentation.
Yes, yes, I can turn it over.
Yeah, that'd be fine. You can come forward, please. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Paul Koppel. I am one of the co-owners of Schottenstein Homes. My office address is 140 Mill Street, Suite A, Gehenna, Ohio, 43230. This evening, I have my partner Steve Schottenstein, who's the other owner, George Acock, who was on our team and is responsible for the architecture that we put together. Linda Menary is with us, and she's going to present the plan, the land plan for us. Also is Scott McClintock, who's our project engineer. We're really pleased to present this to you tonight. We had our first meeting with staff on this project 21 months ago, and we've come a long way since then. Shortly after that, we met with the neighborhood associations in Ballintray. We listened to what they had to say, and we think the plan that we have reflects their wants and needs, and we've had their consistent support before planning commission and now here tonight. We, if you're interested in who we are, Schottenstein Homes, we are not MI Homes. MI used to be MI Schottenstein Homes. This would be our first project in the city of Dublin. We have two projects now in Hilliard and one in Jerome Township and one in Delaware County. We're new to Dublin, but we're not new builders. Steve Schottenstein, who's the namesake of our company, is Irving Schottenstein's youngest son. MI stands for Melon Irving Schottenstein. Steve's been in the home building business for, since he's out of college, which is more years than he'll probably care to admit, and I was with MI for many, many years, too, running the land operation, was general counsel there. So although we're new to Dublin, we're not really new to Dublin. We've been here, and the values that Irving Schottenstein embraced are the values that we have as well. So Linda, if you would come up, please, and give a brief overview of the plan itself.
Good evening, Linda Menary from EMT Land Planner, 5500 New Albany Road. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch you all on TV, and I believe Davignani did a fairly comprehensive presentation, but just to give you, again, just a quick summary, we're a little under 50 acres, 135 units, density less than the comprehensive plan, around 2.7 units per acre. We've got 45 single-family lots and 90 condominium homes. They're detached, and you saw the great architecture that George did, I believe, at the last meeting. We have a fair amount of open space within the plan. There's 18-plus acres, it's not quite 40% of the site. Extensive setbacks along the borders, 100 feet plus along the railroad track, 100-foot minimum. We actually have more than that along Cosgrave Road, 100-foot setback along Churchman, with the exception of two of our lots at the northernmost entry. Those are a little bit closer. And then we've worked a lot with the Amelin Alley and have some buffering that we'll come back to you, well, actually, to planning commission with at final development plan. The site has a lot of interconnected pathways and sidewalks. You'll see those along Cosgrave, there'll be along Churchman, there'll be a major path along the railroad. And the really great thing that we think about this plan is, for the most part, every single house is 400 feet or less, and there's not very many that are that 400-foot distance. So primarily, everybody's kind of enveloped by that green space within the plan. Mix of product, the single family is, again, on that northern half, 45 lots there, and then that really unique condominium plan that we have with that Gothic architecture. George is here tonight, and I think we're really open to answer any more questions that you might have based on the last meeting.
Counsel?
Just wanted to amplify a couple of things that Linda pointed out. When we met with these residents in this area here, their biggest concern, one of their biggest concerns was the setback from Churchman Road, and as you can see, we have created a very spacious setback from there. There's been a lot of discussion about the railroad, a couple of things there. One is, we are setback 100 feet. We are frankly going to do everything we can to make it disappear. We're putting a six-foot mounding in, and we're going to plant it heavily with various landscape, different trees, deciduous and evergreen. This is a wooded area that's being preserved. It's a very nice wooded area, and the city's going to take that. This area here, in your packet, there's a landscape, conceptual landscape plan, as Linda indicated, will be back, but we've, when we originally came in, we had a wall here, and no one liked the wall, so we went to all plant material for the buffer there. So the next item is the architecture. We spent a lot of time on the architecture. George Acox here, George is the brain trust that created this for us.
Gothic, poor man's Gothic architecture, or carpenter Gothic is what it was called, where every house has a basic form and shape that is comfortable. It's not too high, not too wide, but a very human-scale shape. And then the detailing that we would reflect, how does this work, Paul?
It's the top button.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Then there would be these architectural details that were just a little bit more than, that we're trying to make them pretty, is that simple? And not stark. We wanted to create a stone base to these houses because in, when Dublin was first built, most of the buildings were built out of stone. And so that's just carpenter, our interpretation of carpenter Gothic. We also played, worked hard with, how does a garage door fit into this architecture so that, we tried to reduce the scale of that door through the architectural detailing.
Yep.
How about? The houses?
Could you put up the single? Yeah.
And so you can see, there's a similarity between what this style or these details that I'm talking about that were on the cottages. So that is the idea of the community. Thank you. If there's any questions?
George, what's the construction material on the sides and the back? The front elevations are obviously going to be, this isn't hardy plank, this is going to be a wood cedar or?
No, it's a hardy plank.
Is it, the whole houses are going to be hardy plank?
Yes. And we have some rear elevations. We, you know, we don't want a queen and front only. We want to have a four-sided architecture, but for cost purposes, we can't be quite as elaborate.
I think you did a really nice job on the elevations and the architectural details, as you always do, so. I'm just curious about, you know, the other sides of the houses, the house, you know, the design integrity of them.
Just to amplify what George said, the, on the cottages, that's all hardy plank. It's board and batten hardy plank. Both the board and the batten are hardy plank. It's a little less maintenance that way. Sometimes when you put cedar on top of concrete, it doesn't do very well. These are all, the siding that you see is hardy plank, and it's on all four sides. The stone, of course, is stone. You know, no exposed foundations. Everything all the way around is covered with stone. And I don't know, can you pull up the detail page? Yeah. Linda just mentioned something to emphasize is every house has a porch or a stoop. The porches are real porches. They're six feet deep. The stoops are at least two feet, two feet deep. Some are recessed into the homes as well, and that's pretty well illustrated here. All of these design elements have to be incorporated under the terms of the text. Different mixes and matches of each, but we think we've got this thing buttoned up pretty tight, tighter than you typically will see. Any other questions on the architecture?
I don't have a question on the architecture, but what is your timeframe?
Well, you know, next thing we have to do is final development plan. We hope to be through that process mid-March and to have final engineering completed in June. We will put in all the single-family lots in at once, and we haven't decided on how many pads for the condo yet, but we'll do a phase of that at the same time to be completed, paved by end-of-season two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you.
I didn't get to see the presentation at the last meeting, but I'm curious, just going back to my old township days, back in the late seventies, early eighties. There was a lot of issues with that property that backed up the Amlin property?
Yes.
Back then, I mean, there was, there were real property issues with who owned what and who was paying taxes. Did you have your, you probably had your hands full with that, didn't you?
No, actually, we, you know, in terms of, Mr. Leggett, who is here, owned the bulk of the property to the south. The property to the north is owned by the Edwards Company. And a couple of little lots we bought from David Patch and Bill Darling.
That's who I was thinking of.
And so it just sort of squared the property up.
That's fine. I just, yeah, just curious history. Anybody else?
No, I just, I just got one more question for Linda about the screening and how it's going to work for the railroads. Six-foot mounds are great, and it looks like they're going to sort of overlap, interlock to try to roll the sound up. And then you're going to top them with evergreens, I presume?
Evergreens and more deciduous material. I think if there's extra dirt, we'd like to get them above the six-foot height and get as much height on those as we can. Right now, the text is a minimum, I believe, of six feet. So, yeah, we definitely want to overlap those, integrate the path on there, and get as much buffering in there as possible.
What's the price range?
Yeah, you know, I meant to, I'm glad you asked that, because George said to, you know, make inexpensive houses. It is sort of in the eye of the beholder. I think the condos are going to start at about three and go to four, maybe even more. The single-family probably start at about three-fifty and go to five. So if that's inexpensive housing.
Yeah. It is a matter of perspective, isn't it?
Yeah, so.
And the single-family square footage ballpark, are these two or three or four thousand square footers?
Yes.
All the above?
Yes. It'd be, I mean, mainly around three to, three to four, based upon, you know, the price point. So, you know, twenty-eight.
I just want to say again, I want to compliment you on the architecture. I think it's really innovative and something we haven't seen in a long time. And I know for years, people up here have said, you know, gee, we wish we could see some of Old Arlington or Clintonville or some of these other areas, and this is about as close as we've seen.
Thank you. You know, some of the credit should go to planning commission, too. They really pushed us, you know. We, they were, and staff, they, you know, continued to push us and push us, and together we kind of came up with it. So I'd like to take all the credit, but they're kind of mean.
Supposed to be a partnership, you know?
Working together, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Hopefully, you won't be back for a while.
Yeah.
Let that comment go by the wayside. Is there anything else? Anne, do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genese Zerker?
Yes.
And the motion to approve the preliminary plat?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good to see you, Linda. You've been here many times.
I have been.
For a long time. Ordinance fifty-four-toh- fifteen.
Adopting a two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-five-year capital improvements program.
Ms. Muma?
Yes, as a follow-up to our August seventeenth Finance Committee meeting, where we outlined the two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty capital improvements program, we did make a number of revisions based on the comments heard that night. We included in your packet a detailed staff report that not only outlined the changes, but also had follow-up information as council requested. But just in summary, we wanted to go through the adjustments that were made. From the non-major standpoint, under transportation, we added fifty thousand dollars in two thousand and sixteen to the annual sidewalk program. These ones will be utilized to start a sidewalk shaving program. Additionally, we added twenty thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen to the annual bikeway connections and additions, and that is for preliminary design funds for the shared youth path connection from Emerald Parkway to the Dublin Arts Council Building. In the facilities section, we removed ten thousand dollars from two thousand and sixteen for workspace renovations. On to the major adjustments within parks, the Dari Fields Park development was reduced by seventy thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen, and that is because the Miracle League has received enough donations to fund their shade structures in that year. Facilities, seventy-five thousand dollars was removed from two thousand and seventeen that was originally programmed for wayfinding within the police department. And then on to the larger items within transportation, we added, per council's request, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in two thousand and sixteen and two million three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in two thousand, I'm sorry, in two, in two thousand and seventeen for the design and construction of curb, gutter, and sidewalk construction within the mid-century neighborhood. As outlined in your staff memo, we will be transferring funds from the unencumbered balance of the general fund to fund these improvements. What we have outlined in your staff memo are simply ways that if council so desired to put an assessment for some of the costs on the property owners, what those costs would roughly be. But rest assured, what is programmed in the CIP is coming from the general fund and is set to be programmed. Additionally, we've removed four hundred and forty thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen for the Tuttle Crossing Boulevard extension. If you recall, there was a discussion about the pedestrian tunnel. That has been removed, and we will continue to monitor federal requirements related to ADA crossings at roundabouts, and if that needs to be added because of a federal mandate, we will do that as we move forward towards two thousand and nineteen. Additionally, as was discussed that evening, we have moved the construction of the pedestrian bridge from two thousand and eighteen back to two thousand and seventeen. We've also proposed utilizing five million dollars of the general fund balance to fund this nineteen-point-two-million-dollar bridge. This does a number of things. One, it reduces the debt the city will issue. And secondly, it's really in the spirit of what the general fund in part has been built for. As I outlined in your staff memo, the fund balance has grown over time, one, because of our income tax collections, but also because we knew that there would be significant investments related to Bridge Street. So this certainly is an appropriate use of the general fund balance and will allow us a little bit more flexibility on the debt side moving forward if some other projects were come to be. Also associated with the movement of the construction of that pedestrian bridge, we shifted the program management for Bridge Street District to have six hundred thousand dollars in each two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen as opposed to two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. So this is just in correlation with that. And then finally, within the water and sewer funds, we have included funds in each of the years listed that you see there that would implement the first five years of a fifteen-year extension planned. We kept the allocation from the capital improvement tax fund, programming funds each year to transfer into the water and sewer funds, but I also want to make the note that there might be additional resources that might be required from the general fund in order to make this happen. We will certainly continue to evaluate the best way to fund these moving forward, but through a combination of the transfer from the capital improvement fund as well as general fund reserves, we will move forward with programming these extensions.
Very good. This is probably one of the more aggressive I remember in my twelve years. I know a lot of hard work went into it, and I know you were given some marching orders, and it looks like you've come through with flying colors, so thank you.
Thank you. And just as a side note, normally, we would have for you this evening a final bound version of the document. However, we didn't know if there would still be some points up for discussion this evening, so we held off on printing that. But based on council's feedback this evening, if it indeed passes, we will send the final document to the printer and then distribute it to you as soon as it's needed.
Very good. Counsel, anybody want to weigh in?
Greg?
Just real quick, Angel. So the bridge is not being moved back? The bridge is where it was originally programmed to be?
No.
Tell me about the bridge.
The bridge, the result is a one-year pushback. Now, what I want to, want you to keep in mind is that, getting that designed and getting that under construction, we still have the funding to pursue design. We have permitting, we have all that going on in two thousand and sixteen. Originally, we didn't anticipate the construction of that happening till towards the back end of sixteen anyway. We think that that, this is realistic relative to the actual start time. If design goes better than expected and everything else falls into place, we can certainly try to pull that up some, but it was a latter part of sixteen construction to begin with from the very beginning. So you might be talking about the matter of a couple of months or something like that, really, by the time we get under construction. Terry, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
Permitting being the big variable.
Permitting, yeah, permitting through the core primarily, right, is the big variable right now.
But to Greg's point, the original piece that we saw was out further, and now it's come back a little closer.
Yeah, originally, it was shown in sixteen, and then we pushed it out to eighteen, and now we've moved it back to seventeen. And I would envision earlier in, you know, the earlier part of seventeen, which is probably is more realistic, we think, with what, what we think was going to happen to begin with. Terry, anything you want to add?
The Army Corps is probably no treat to deal with either.
I'm sorry?
The Army Corps of Engineers is, sometimes, that could take some time.
Permitting, I think you have to keep in mind, the bridge doesn't begin till Old Riverside goes away. That doesn't happen till fall of sixteen. So it couldn't physically start, even if all these other things happened till that point. But to Dana's point, I think the notion of permitting and approvals is probably going to be the thing we're working hardest to try to compress.
So that's within our control, of course.
Permitting and approvals, not necessarily. No, that's third-party agencies for the most part.
Yeah, we're not talking our building approval. We're talking Corps of Engineers approval in the, in the water course. Now, and I want to make sure I emphasize, maybe I'm wrong, but I, the start of this bridge was not going to happen till the very latter part of sixteen to begin with, probably late third, early fourth quarter. So by showing this in seventeen doesn't mean the end of seventeen. It means as soon as seventeen as we can get all this stuff in. We're just being more realistic as to when we think this will actually happen.
It sounds like you were responsive to our request and...
That was certainly the intent.
As much as possible.
Plus being realistic.
I very, yeah, exactly. And, you know, certainly, we would expect realism and understand that, you know, the internal capacity is, is one issue, you know, to get, we've got a lot of balls in the air, and then also, you know, realizing that the Army Corps of Engineers is involved in other agencies. So I'm appreciative of that. I understand it's not just the bridge, though, because what we're talking about in the narrative here is the plazas on either end and sort of getting those in place. So you have to, you can have the bridge, but you've got to have some...
There's a lot of construction sequencing to Terry's point to happen as well.
And we aren't sure how that's going to unfold right now either.
We feel pretty confident where that's headed, but there are still some loose ends to tie up when we get into finite engineering.
Gotcha.
You have the issue of getting Riverside Drive out of the way, then starting the bridge and getting the bridge construction enough out of the way so you can get plazas put in.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, the permitting and all of the things that you were talking about originally, are they really taking place in sixteen so that the building begins to happen in seventeen?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then completion? Is it likely that it would be completed in seventeen? Can it be done in one year's time?
It's a two-year construction timeframe for the bridge.
Okay, anybody else?
And then I wanted to follow up on the mid-century neighborhood, since we both had a presentation tonight, as well as...
We've got a lot of balls in the air, and then also, you know, realizing that the Army Corps of Engineers is involved in other agencies. So I'm appreciative of that. I understand it's not just the bridge, though, because what we're talking about in the narrative here is the plazas on either end and sort of getting those in place. So you have to, you can have the bridge, but you've got to have some...
There's a lot of construction sequencing to Terry's point to happen as well.
And we aren't sure how that's going to unfold right now either.
We feel pretty confident where that's headed, but there are still some loose ends to tie up when we get into finite engineering.
Gotcha.
You have the issue of getting Riverside Drive out of the way, then starting the bridge and getting the bridge construction enough out of the way so you can get plazas put in.
Okay.
So I just want to clarify, the permitting and all of the things that you were talking about originally, are they really taking place in '16 so that the building begins to happen in '17?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then completion? Is it likely that it would be completed in '17? Can it be done in one year's time?
It's a two-year construction timeframe for the bridge.
Okay, anybody else?
And then I wanted to follow up on the mid-century neighborhood since we both had a presentation tonight, as well as we have materials at our place and that we, one of them at least we got on email. It's in our plan, and it's in for '16 and '17. When, at what point do we engage the neighborhood in the design and all? It seems like that is one of the major things that they're asking for, is active participation in that.
Right. And I, what I would offer is that, again, this is the budgeting process, laying out design work in '16, as you pointed out, construction in '17, and we would reach out to the neighborhood as we start that design process. The thing that really is up in the air, I think, relative to the neighborhood expectation versus what staff would recommend, is this notion of sidewalks on one side of the street versus two sides of the street. And we've heard that from the residents. I think we need to jump into a dialogue with the residents on why that is, why they want that, which side of the street. We need to have your direction on whether that's okay. That's a different standard than what we've done citywide when we've, where you have curb, gutter, and sidewalk. And so we need to understand, you know, why one side versus two. I don't think you want to design the streets tonight, but that's certainly a dialogue we would, you know, undertake next year as we go, you know, starting to enter into the design process.
Right. I appreciated your email, Dana, that you wrote. I don't know how long that took you, but it was, you made a comment in your email that it was on the fly or something, and I just like, wow, that was pretty detailed, and it was a good response. It, I think, alleviated the neighbors' concern. They didn't want to have this thing designed. I don't think they're fully cognizant of the process and how it would work. And what it sounds like is we're interested in collaborating with them. They had some ideas for maybe some different stormwater treatments, and, you know, obviously that's something that would have to be vetted out by staff and...
Certainly. And when we're retrofitting a neighborhood like this, you know, there's lots of things to take into consideration, even timing and so forth.
And I think they proposed the phasing, not because that would be their first choice, but because they thought that that might make the cost, the budgeting, a little bit more palatable.
Which I appreciate. In fact, internally, we looked at it the same way.
Right.
I know that we had a discussion about should we spread this out over two or three years, and the engineers, and we all sat around the table and agreed that, you know, it's really just more efficient to do this at once if you're going to pay for it this way to just get it done.
I talked to Deborah Mitchell today about that, and she understands that it's certainly more cost-efficient. And we're doing other things other than just overlaying. You're really improving the roadway significantly.
Right. The $125 per linear foot is inclusive of a deep-depth repair, what we call not just an overlay.
Right, very good.
Which is pretty consistent with what we do on most of our streets.
Anybody else? I wanted to add just briefly on the Tuttle Crossing, the pedestrian tunnel, this has bothered me for some time, and I see that the federal standards with respect to pedestrian activated signals, is it two lanes or more going in a roundabout where they want to have these activated signals?
I'll ask Megan to address that one.
And the reason I say this, as you know, my office is, my office is right on the Post Navy Mirrorfield Roundabout, and I sit right on top of that. It's a lot of pedestrian traffic through there, and one of the problems is the traffic coming through, some of it's coming through pretty good, they're looking left, they're looking left, and when you have pedestrians crossing on the right, I've seen a lot of near misses there. I think that may be one of the reasons for this. I was even going to mention something about maybe some kind of activated signals at these, at some of these, whether it be a Fleischer or like we have, I mean, I don't know. I just know it appears to me to be very, very dangerous. And as I said, I've seen numerous near misses there with bikes and pedestrians. People get going, they're looking left for the traffic coming around, and pedestrians are crossing to the right.
But it's on the pedestrian to make sure that it's, they have safe passage.
Well, you know, it's a crosswalk, that's what they see, and that's the dangerous part. But anyway, I won't belabor it, that's just my two cents worth on that.
So...
Okay? So with that, we have any other discussion? If not, we'll vote on the ordinance. Ann?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Thanks to everybody on staff for their hard work pulling all this together. Ordinance 59-15.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a maintenance easement for Capital Stone Lane from the Woods of Dublinshire Homeowners' Association for the ability to perform certain street maintenance.
Dana?
Nothing new to add to this, to the staff report.
Counsel, anything? Questions? Ann, on the ordinance?
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
No.
Mr. Reiner?
No.
Mr. Peterson? Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Very good. All right. I move to waive the council rules of order to consider ordinances 60-15 through 64-15 amended together. Is there a second?
Second.
On that motion?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber? Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
And Ann, would you like to read all the titles of the five ordinances into the record, please?
Ordinance 60-15, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $10 million for the purpose of paying the cost of expanding the city's justice center, declaring an emergency. 61-15 is providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $2.5 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal sewer system, declaring an emergency. 62-15 is providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $11.1 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the city's vehicular transportation system within and serving the Bridge Street District and declaring an emergency. 63-15, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds, the maximum principal amount of $25 million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the city's vehicular transportation within and serving the Bridge Street District and declaring an emergency. And 64-15 amended, is providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $32 million for the purpose of paying the cost of providing for the construction of two parking structures within the Bridge Street District and otherwise improving the related sites, together with all necessary pertinences thereto, all in furtherance of commerce, and to create jobs and employment opportunities, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Ms. Muma?
Yes, I have no changes from the first reading at the last council meeting. I did want to take this opportunity to remind council and the public that we are going to be holding a resident investor meeting this Thursday evening at 6:30 PM in, at the Dublin Community Recreation Center, and that is for any resident that might be interested in purchasing the city of Dublin's bonds. I also wanted to note that we are planning to issue the general obligation bonds next week. In anticipation of that, we had our rating presentations with Fitch last Monday and Moody's Investor Services last Tuesday, and I'm happy to report that today we received notification from Fitch that we got our AAA rating, and they confirmed the AAA rating on our other bond issues that we have. So that was certainly good news. I'd like to thank Mayor Keenan for his participation last Tuesday in the Moody's presentation. I think it went very well, and we're looking forward to getting these bonds sold.
And that translates into some very good rates for us.
Yes.
Dana?
Mayor, may I? I just want to say thanks to the team who helped prep us both for Fitch and for Moody's. You know, it's just, it's a significant undertaking to prepare for those presentations and to get everything in order, and then to actually sit before them and present. And I want to thank Jake Wasniak, Tom Rakuto, Charlie Wise of Key Advisors. I want to thank Jim Hargrove and his partner, of course, Brad Sprague, who we accidentally lost, passed away very unexpectedly two weekends ago. Brad's been a long-term member of the team and a key advisor to us, and we certainly learned a lot from Brad over the years. We're going to miss him extensively and appreciate all that he's done for the city in preparation for these things in the past. Also, thanks to Greg Daniels, Chris Franzman from Squire Patent Box for all that they've done. But most of all, I want to thank the orchestrator here, namely Angel and her team. She just did yeoman's work in getting ready for this, and the preparation was enormous, and it just went off without a hitch very professionally. I couldn't have been more proud to be part of a presentation than what she put together, so.
Very good. Questions?
No, I just wanted to ask, are any of the aforementioned people in the audience this evening? If so, give us a word.
They are, actually. I think, yeah, we have Jake and Charlie.
Jake Wasniak and Charlie Wise from Keybank are here. You guys can stand.
Raise your hands, guys.
Thank you.
Don't be too shy, yeah?
Talked about some tough, great coaching. These guys are great coaches, so they did a great job for us.
So the resident meetings, they'll have an opportunity to buy, to buy the bonds. We'll obviously know the interest rates at that time, what those might be.
Correct, but we'll have a general idea of the various coupon rates that they can buy. And then there will be folks from Keybank that will actually do the presentation along with Edward Jones.
There you go.
The retail, retail component of the transaction.
Is there a minimum amount? Do we know that? $5,000, yeah, very good. Thank you.
There will be a publication in tomorrow's Villager. Unfortunately, you know, that's one day ahead of it, but we've also put it out on our social media channels also.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to, obviously, you know, thank Angel for all of her efforts, but also point out the reason for the emergency is a matter of market timing, just to be clear.
Agreed. We don't want the interest rates to run away from us.
No, we've had lengthy discussion over the past couple of days on where is our risk? If we wait until after the Fed comes out next Wednesday and Thursday, are we at more risk with what could happen after that? Or, you know, are we in a riskier position going earlier in the week? And through lots of discussion, we've determined that it's better to go to the market Tuesday in advance of that Fed decision, and, you know, that might end up resulting in a little bit higher rate that we pay, but not knowing what could happen after that, hopefully it would be less than if we waited till after the Fed decision if rates increased.
They've been threatening for a long time, so I guess we'll see.
No, we think we get the Moody's rating tomorrow, correct?
Yes, we're expecting it tomorrow afternoon.
Good. Okay. Is there a motion to treat this ordinance as an emergency?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ann, on the motion?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber? Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
And vote collectively on the ordinances 60-15 through 64-15.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber? Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
And Mayor Keenan?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance, well, I guess we already did that, didn't we? Go to ordinance 65-15.
Declaring improvements to certain parcels of real property in the city's Bridge Street District to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended, authorizing compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Tole's Career and Technical Center and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Angel?
Yes, this is just like the tiff you approved earlier this evening, other than this is for Block B.
Is there any questions? If not, there'll be a second reading, public hearing at September 21 council meeting. 68-15.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with and execute a guaranteed maximum price amendment with Alfred Inc. Construction Manager at risk for Phase 2 of the Justice Center Construction Renovation Project.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Dana?
Yes, so as the title states, this is the second phase of the GMP relative to the expansion of the Justice Center. We included a staff report with this resolution. Be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Have we done one of these before, the guaranteed? I don't remember.
No, this is the first time we've done this.
So we're in a learning curve here. It'd be interesting to see how it shakes out.
Yeah, it's been a good process. It's been a pretty steep learning curve, but I think we've been very pleased with how the pricing's been coming out relative.
So maybe when this is all done, maybe you can give us a comparison of the way we did it before and how this worked out, and maybe let council understand better the process.
Yeah, we could compare process. I'm not sure how price, but nonetheless, you get how that would work, so.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any other council questions? Ann?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
69-15.
Intent to appropriate a 0.023 acre more or less B simple interest and a 0.070 acre more or less temporary easement from Richard Ramey II and Sherry S. Allison from the property look area to 8961 Lockerbie Court.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
As the title states, this is for temporary easement. There was a staff report that accompanied this, and it also showed you the location of the site, unless you have any questions, it's all.
I think we've been on this for some time, probably, working to that end. Counsel, any discussion? Hearing none? Ann?
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Staff comments?
I have none. I was going to talk about the rating, but I already did that.
She stole your thunder. Okay, council committee reports. Beautify your neighborhood grant committee, community development committee? John?
Yeah, we met on August 20 and had a number of applicants. Brandon for $5,000, the Muse at Mirrorfield for $2,2027, Hart Place for $4226, and the Village of Bell Griffin for $5,000. Again, the amount of requests was way under the improved budget of $32,000, so we are trying to encourage homeowners associations to get out and start kind of coming up with proposals. All these were approved, and are there any questions?
No questions. Those are the recommendations of the community development committee, I presume?
That is our recommendation.
I just wanted to ask for a clarification. The Village of Bell Griffin, their matching amount is $26,000?
I'm sorry? Could somebody answer that?
If you recall, any of the members?
Yeah, they, they want to do this treatment for their pond edge, and it's quite expensive, and they applied to the city to defer their grant, or defer their expense by $5,000, but they are actually spending $26,000 on that pond edging.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. Is there a motion to approve the committee recommendations? So moved. Thank you.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
forward the Dublin Arts Council, City of Dublin Cultural Plan. They requested $25,000. Their project costs $30,000, but Crawford Horne has donated $5,000 towards it to complete the components of a cultural art plan. And then for $75,000 towards the, up to $75,000 towards an NEA grant, which requires a one-to-one match. So if they were successful, there's very few in the country given out, they do have a good relationship with NEA and have gotten other grants, so, you know, it's possible that they would get this. But let's say that they requested 75, but they got 50, then that's what our grant would be for, would just be up to whatever amount, but not exceeding 75,000. So the committee is recommending approval of that request tonight.
So did, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't catch all that meeting, but is that, is that eliminating the arts in public places, 75,000?
No. No, no, no. That's a, this is a one-to-one match for the arts in public places.
I thought that was part of the original request, though.
That was a staff recommendation, but we decided...
Yeah, we don't want to do that.
No, we're not suggesting that, that in this motion.
Good, good.
So are there two separate motions, Mayor?
You want to motion on that?
Yes, we can have two separate motions. One, so I, I move that we approve the $25,000 grant for the cultural plan.
Very good.
For Dublin Arts Council.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Ann?
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zirker?
Yes.
And then your second.
And the second motion is to approve up to seven, matching $75,000 for an arts in public places funding for Dublin Arts Council.
And Mayor Lee, excuse me, also that motion, it was not to affect the arts and, the art in public places.
Right, I mean, I guess if it's not in the motion, I didn't think it existed, but if you want it in the motion, no problem with that. So this, this request of $75,000 is in addition to our regular arts in public places.
Right, I'll second it.
Okay.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Ms. Genisi Zirker?
Yes.
And then your second.
And the second motion is to approve up to seven, matching $75,000 for an arts in public places funding for Dublin Arts Council.
And Mayor Lee, excuse me, also that motion, it was not to affect the arts and, the art in public places.
Right, I mean, I guess if it's not in the motion, I didn't think it existed, but if you want it in the motion, no problem with that. So this, this request of $75,000 is in addition to our regular arts in public places.
Right, I'll second it.
Okay.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Ms. Genisi Zirker?
Yes. And then we also had discussion regarding the Ohio University's College of Fine Arts Summer Theater Program. We asked that the staff at Ohio University have continued conversations and come back to us in the month of September for more discussion on that request. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Public services?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
John, DAC, anything to report there?
Nothing. Thank you.
And Board of Education, Greg?
We had a meeting last week, Dana, Angel, and I, with the school board representatives and Dr. Holdley. Our staff just does a, they always do a fantastic job, but the representation that we get by Dana and Angel at these meetings is truly impressive. They have a grasp of the big picture, and every minutia, detailed question that the school, the schools ask, they have answers for them, and it's a very impressive thing to participate in, and I'm very proud what the city does with that relationship. And there's a couple of interesting projects coming up with technology and things like that, where Dana is suggesting ways that the city can help the schools get connected in through technology networks and all, all that kind of stuff that Dana does, and it's really impressive.
Very good. Morpsy, Mayor Lee?
We have not had a meeting, thank you.
Okay, and Tim, Northwest 33 Innovation Corridor?
We have a meeting this Friday morning.
You can see there's a lot of committees, a lot of things going on, so thank you all for your efforts there. Council Roundtable, Greg, you want to begin?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Amy?
I had a couple of questions. One is with regard to the landscaping. I happened to notice south on Emerald Parkway, of course, we have our portion that is landscaped in the city of Columbus's, which is a stark contrast, but I did notice that a lot of the landscaping is looking like it is much worse for the wear of the past month or two of warm temperatures and no rain. And I wondered what the plan was for that. There's a lot of dead and dying landscape material there, and that's, that's ours. And I know that we get reimbursed, you know, whatever isn't, dies out there in the first year, it gets replanted, but then we lose a season of, of growth. And I just wondered, you know, we seem to have a lot of success when we put those bags for the trees with the water in them, and I don't know why those aren't out there, but I'm thinking that that might be something that we need to...
I'll have to check and advise on that. I know, I know we've hit a dry period.
Right.
These last couple of weeks, which, you know, hard to believe after all that we've been through, but certainly things are looking stressed out there, so I'll check on that and get back to you.
Yeah, I mean, some of it's just not gonna, not gonna make it. And then I guess my other question related to landscaping is just on my mind. We've had a couple, the data center that's on Innovation Drive is one of them, and I've gotten some questions about how that project will be landscaped and what our code is relative to that. I'm, I didn't get asked about the code. I got asked how is that building going to be landscaped by my neighbors? But then relative to the code in that part of Dublin, when we've got our tech flex, and I'm not sure exactly if that is, is tech flex or if that's something that...
Yeah.
...preexisted, but I'd be interested if planning could get just a little quick rundown, because then there's the Surtec project that is up on Shire Rings, and it looks like they are pretty much complete. I know they're in their new part. There is no landscaping across the front of that. There's a couple shade tree kind of trees out in front, but the, the foundation is not landscaped at all, and I'm just thinking those buildings could be so much more attractive if they had some landscaping, and so I'm curious what the plan is, and then again, what our tech flex code calls for, because before we have development, it seems like that would be a good time to insert landscaping if we want it, because I certainly would be in favor of that. And I, I don't know, like I said, what the code requires and what it doesn't.
I'll double-check the Surtec. I remember specifically, I think you and I had had an exchange about the landscaping on the expedient data center at one point on innovation. I do know that on the east side and, and south side of that building, it's, it's standard landscape, but we'll get that to you. And then that exposed wall on the west side, which is the wall where future expansion